You're gonna sing it?
No, I mean the, like, allegiance. I, I could sing it, but two of them run away.
Oh, Carol, that is too funny.
Oh, well, I'm not getting on.
Carol, what is going to sing the last?
I am not. I'm just singing it.
The United States of America. In this republic which stands one nation under God. He can be peaceful with a living team and justice for all.
So, we'd like to make a shout out to our fellow selectmen, Joanne Casey, who's just gotten out of surgery in the hospital and she's doing well. And we wish her well. And come back, come back, we miss you.
We wish.
Soon, let's get David to here. So, uh, do we have a motion to sign awards?
To move.
Second, all in favor? Okay. Need a motion to approve the minutes of December twenty-seventh?
Soon.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Okay. Tony wasn't there, so. It still had three, right?
Mm-hmm. What do you do if you don't have, uh? Do you join them or take them with you? How does that work?
So this one got approved. Okay, where's the third one? There's three of them here, where's January fourth? I don't have January fourth. Yeah, okay, I'm looking.
Where? Oh, we're in the bathroom.
Does anybody have January fourth?
January fourth.
If somebody... It's right here. Okay. Okay.
That was a special time meeting.
Yes.
Number six down there.
Yes, number six.
Okay, so we have two with just myself, Rachel, and Joanne, we're at.
That's right.
Do you want to table those until she's back? I don't. We don't have three. Okay. So, I'll give that to you. I'll put T to you then. No, is this, uh, Rachel, update, over at Lumbec Landmarks?
Oh, yes, I need to move away from my hat as a select person now and I will begin my position as the president of Lumbec Landmarks. Um, as everybody knows, the Briar Shet sailed away on January the fourth. Is there anybody who didn't know that? No. Uh, the Briar Shet is now sitting on a beach in Campabello. And, uh, it has been considerably vandalized, but Lumbec Landmarks is determined to bring it back. We have contracted with a contractor, a couple contractors on both sides of the bridge. And cooperatively, they're going to bring it back in the next day or so. Uh, dismantle what is just detrous material and throw that away. Uh, and may salvage whatever is possible to rebuild a, um, a replica of the Briar Shet. Which is being encouraged by the Maine Community Foundation and Historical Preservation Society. Um, I have to say, it's been a monumental five days. Does anybody have questions about this?
I do have a question. How, how did you get off of the New England Marina, New England Aquariums?
Oh, when it was wedged in there?
Yeah.
Amazingly, I mean, I went home that day, we all went home. And we said, it's staying here, it's not going anywhere, we're fine, it's good. And I was very happily building a fire, the fireplace right up in the sewer. Had what I called, I said, Rachel, it's sailing by my house. And so, I went down and sure enough, it was on its way over. I, I think it's time and tide, you know, we can't second guess Mother Nature, much as we'd like to. Barbara?
Uh, Rachel, how are, how is Landmarks going to pay these contractors to dismantle? And if I understood correctly, they are dismantling the whole thing?
They're dismantling what's in Campabello right now.
How are they, how are they paying for it?
We have money.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, you didn't have money to fix the pilings.
Well, the pilings, the cost of the pilings would be a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Um, and, and it's, we don't have that money. We have fifteen thousand dollars in the back that is geared to, uh, help the Briar Shet. I've got that okay from the Maine Community Foundation and we're good to go.
Uh, is that from the fifteen thousand dollars that Landmarks received from the Belvedere grant?
Correct.
Um...
The Belvedere is under the auspices of Maine Community Foundation.
No, I realize that, thank you very much for clarifying. But, uh, the Belvedere grant that was awarded in twenty seventeen to Lumbec Landmarks states, "To repair the pilings and storm damage and to secure the Briar Shet to the McCurdy Smokehouse complex" was awarded fifteen thousand. It does not say anything about dismantling it in another country and rebuilding.
Well, we didn't choose to have it put in another country, you understand? However, I would never have okayed a check being paid to do this without first consulting with Maine Community Foundation, which I did. That was the first thing I did. And they said, fine.
Um, yeah, if I could, and I, I guess this might be the right place to say this, if you would indulge me, I'd like to make a statement. Now, the Pickling Shed is now on Canadian land. Someone went over to Campabello...
The Skinning Shed?
The local people thought...
No, I didn't shit. No, they call it the Pickling Shed.
That's why I said Pickling Shed. The Pickling Shed is now on Canadian land. Someone went over to Campabello Island taking pictures of people and their cars. These people were picking up debris from the shed on the beach. This person declared that they are, they have salvage rights and that they were from the Lubeck Historical Society. For the record, and I hope Mr., um, John, our newspaper reporter, will put in a paper that the Lubeck Historical Society has nothing to do with the Briar Shet, the Pickling Shed, or Landmarks.
Any, any Landmarks, yeah.
And only because, Rachel, I've gotten emails, I've gotten phone calls for interviews, and I have turned, sent back to people, this is Rachel Rubio's phone number, this Landmarks owns it, Lubeck Historical Society has absolutely nothing to do with it.
Thank you, thank you for doing that. That would account for all the phone calls, I'm getting. So, uh, yes, good, anything else?
Stephanie?
They, well, then, it wasn't, you know, I, it wasn't me taking the pictures, but I did see the people over there, they weren't picking up debris. They were inside the shed with sledgehammers and chainsaws, ready for the thing to leave. They weren't sober, there were about five of them, they were partying, they weren't sober, they had two chainsaws going, they were cutting the insides of that and it was ready to collapse. But, we didn't, we didn't do anything, it's dangerous. But, but we're not from the historical society, some people may so go, definitely.
Well, I just wanted to say, I got pictures sent to me from Campabello, I've gotten comments from people from Campabello, and I'd be happy to share them with either Rachel or anybody else that wants to see them. That looks like the roof is sitting on the ground. And they're, they're talking about, well, whoever, somebody posted, well, whoever took a shit, a chainsaw to it made it worse. It did, I don't know, I didn't go over, and I'm not saying that I don't care, but it wasn't my place to go over and investigate or to turn around and see.
They decided on the, um, Rachel's name. Rachel, thank you.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we, if you want to talk about this more, call me up.
Yes, thank you. Uh, we have been given the, um, column A, B, and C, I called, in the process of condemnation. And it's complicated, so we're trying to simplify that for the public and we are going to hold a public hearing five o'clock before our next select board meeting, January twenty-fourth, to go through what people have been questioning, how we can deal with, uh, dangerous and dilapidated buildings. So, um, the town has sent many letters to the buildings that have questions on their structural integrity. And we have done as much as we can, through the code enforcement officer, the harbor master, and the board of selectmen. And it's a point now where I think there is enough interest in addressing remediation of dangerous buildings in the process that would be a civil proceeding. So, if you're interested in understanding how that process would work, it'll be a little bit longer than just this meeting. So we'll have a public hearing on that at five o'clock, January twenty-fourth. And there is an ad in the paper for it, so please, if you're interested. It's been a private session, Barbara?
Um, with regards to that meeting, um, I am requesting that the select board please review the May seventeenth, twenty-seventeen, including the town manager, um, meeting that's posted on YouTube and after that, review it so we can discuss it at the next meeting, since we're going to be discussing condemnation and dangerous buildings.
You want us to review May seventeenth's meeting?
May seventeenth, please review that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Excuse me. Will the harbor board, will the harbor master be at that meeting?
Again? Yes. Barbara, that was a select board meeting?
Yes, it was, May seventeenth, it's posted, I think, as May twenty-first, plus November eighteenth, but it's not, when you open it up, it's May seventeenth.
You, um, might, might be interested to know that there was a, I just will briefly mention the one thing that the, uh, our lawyer did define, that the perps of the statute, building means a building or structure, or any portion of a building or structure thereof, or any warp here, piling portion thereof, or any located on or extended from land within the boundaries of the municipality as measured from the low water mark. So, the jurisdiction of any building to the low water mark is, uh, the code enforcement officers.
Yes, I'm aware of that, but there's two areas, there's, the ones I'm...
Well, whenever it becomes an occupational thing, then it's different.
Yeah, okay.
Then it's the code's guy.
But you're saying dangerous buildings, so that's all dangerous buildings in town?
To the low water mark, which is a little bit different than I want, as far as we need to...
Okay, so there's gonna be two areas then. One area is under the harbor master's jurisdiction.
Uh, the, well, I don't think there are any buildings below the low water mark.
Below the low water?
Low water mark, low water mark, yes.
So...
The harbor master doesn't have any jurisdiction from low water mark to high water mark?
Well, I'm, I'm just reading definition of buildings and code enforcement.
Well, our harbor ordinance clearly states...
Your harbor board and the harbor master.
I may finish.
Go ahead.
Thank you. The ordinance clearly states that there are buildings, warps, piers, anything in the water, whether it's high or low side, it's in the water, it's in that area, that, that the harbor master has the, um, responsibility to keep people apprised of the condition of their building.
And he, and there is a letter that they made, they made, made forth that they did, he did.
Yeah, but I'm not, that's not what I'm talking, speaking to, I'm not speaking to this situation, I'm speaking to, we have dangerous buildings in town that are not on the waterfront or in the waters.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, there's two zones.
Yes, there, there is, there is, right, there's two zones, so both the harbor master and the code enforcement officers will be here. And they are, and they will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Okay. On a lighter note, Kurt?
Yes, should I stand or, I've never been here.
No, I think you should sing.
This is an audition.
I've got the interest of the entire town, so I think I can address everybody. Uh, my name's Kurt Andreson, I'm relatively new to Lubeck, I've normally lived here for three years. Uh, but I've been trying to think of something I can, Lubeck's been good to me so far. And I've been trying to think of something I can do to give back to the community. So I've come up with the idea of the Lubeck Area Musicians Philanthropic Society. And I am a music performing, professional performing musician in Lubeck and Chiais. Um, my idea was to create a society of musicians who will perform charity concerts at Stockford Park, um, with the intent of raising, fundraising and giving money to the very well-deserving nonprofits and charity groups in and around Lubeck. Um, so, there's a lot of talent around here, um, not everybody gets an opportunity to play. And we have, we have limited, we have limited venues in Lubeck at the moment, as you know, Annabelle's is closed. Um, but I think that the arts are still very much alive in Lubeck and, um, and the musicians, um, uh, need a place to play, but they also want to give back to the community. And, um, uh, LAMS, Lubeck Area Musicians Philanthropic Society, is not yet an official organization so far. I'm the only, only member, with Fred as a very interested participant. And, uh, but I have talked with members of El McCrally and I have talked with members of Fremont String Band prior to this about other charitable performances and people are interested in doing, in doing this. Um, so what Lance wants to do is use Stockford Park and possibly the International Marathon as venues to put on Sunday afternoon, family-friendly, non-alcoholic concerts at Stockford Park. Um, that would last for approximately three hours, um, probably having two different performances, two hour, hour and a half or one hour, fifteen minute performances with, with setup time in between. Um, and, uh, this would run from May until October. Um, and I'm hoping to schedule them on or around the holidays, so the first one would be on the Memorial Day weekend. The, um, the second, the last one would be on the Labor Day weekend and, uh, several in between during the summer. Um, and what I'm here for is, I want, I, I, I've discussed this with Fred and I think the best way, the best, the best situation would be if the town of Lubeck would officially sanction these events and, and assist LAMS in, um, in ensuring the events. And I've briefly talked to, to Carol about this, but, um, it's, uh, as it stands, um, I, I already have talked to some businessmen and business people in the town about possibly sponsoring these, these concerts so that I can pay for the insurance through the tulip program. Um, but it's not inexpensive and I would, it would, the ideal situation would be if the town insured these events so that I could use, so that Lance could use all of the money we raise from business sponsors and individuals at the concerts, because we're also going to solicit for, for donations during the concerts. Um, so that way, that way I can use all of that money to go to the charitable organizations rather than have to pay some of the money out for insurance and then some of the money. Um, uh, I have no idea how this is going to go, so I have no idea how much money is actually going to be coming in. Um, so, if the town could help us with that, um, it would get things going. Uh, I really think that it would be a good draw for the town, it would bring visitors to the town. Um, as I already said, it'll raise money for the local charities. Um, it will provide free arts experience in the town. Um, it'll promote the arts to children. Um, the spin-off from visitors will help the businesses in town on a Sunday afternoon. Everybody's open downtown in the summertime. People will be going to the grocery store to buy Gatorade and, you know, chips to bring down to the park. Um, uh, another thing that I'm hoping to do is, is we'll encourage interaction between the summer keys people who are mostly classical and jazz-trained musicians and the popular and folk and country musicians that live in and around Lubeck. Um, and, uh, I think that this would also be a positive advancement situation as far as the town, the, the image of the town of Lubeck is concerned, because, um, not that Lubeck has any trouble promoting itself, but this would be a good, a good, a good way to promote the town. Um, and also to contribute to the advancement and the, and the preservation of Stockford Park. So that's my idea, and I was, I'm hoping for support from, from the select board and the town.
So, thank you.
We, uh, I did something, I did some research.
I did some research on other municipalities and, and their sponsorship on music in the parks and, uh, the city, um, the city manager, Cal, sponsors a similar event and they are, um, MMA's insurance does cover that. So we're trying to make sure that we can sponsor it in the correct way if we go ahead with that.
Okay.
Which will cover the insurance, but we just, we would need to vote on that and also make sure that we have an approval. We're getting, we both have calls, emails and calls into our particular insurance policy. But it has been done in other municipalities. I personally think it's a great idea, I'd like to hear from the rest of the board, Tony?
Yeah, coordinate, around Memorial Day is also the birdie festival out at the, um, CCLC, so you might want to check with them.
Oh, okay.
Because those, um, we're talking about trying to bring those people in more frequently into town.
Oh, right, they come there and then they turn around and they leave, but they're coming in.
Pretty much, yeah.
Or if there's an event there.
Yes, yeah, and sometimes they have events there. But I've noticed, and I would say the restaurants in town have brought them more into town now.
Yeah. Well, on that note, that's why I, that's why I decided on one to four as the time to have these shows so that they won't interfere with business downtown, because McGinley has music all weekend long and I don't want to interfere with the musicians who are playing there or at Annabelle's or whatever other venues decide to have music.
Also, if you, if you can clarify this with the marathon.
I, 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 I've only talked to Maureen about it and I think she maybe brought it up last night at the marathon.
I know, I'm not doing the marathon.
Oh, you're not, okay, so...
But we, as, in charge of the downtown?
I, I think she, I think she's, I think she's not hands-on involved, I think she's just in like an advisory position.
Oh, oh.
Because, uh, or she might be involved if she gets more help than she had last year, because she was very overwhelmed being the only person organizing the street there. Cause it's four blocks, it's, it was hard.
Well, I know, but you've got the street there that side, but you know that side, you're gonna be the other end of town if you do that.
Yeah, well, my, my idea that I discussed, discussed with Maureen was, um, one thing that I think, I'm not speaking for the business owners downtown, but my understanding from Scuttlebutt is that the music only being on one end of Water Street makes it hard for Cohill's and, and Water Street and bring people down to their end of the street. So, being that Gail McGinley will most likely have musicians or musicians,
Yeah.
I was thinking that we could have a second stage down at the end of Water Street.
Dancing.
Absolutely.
I think we're getting a little off the topic.
Oh, we're just, yeah.
So, so, sorry, wait, that's how that would work with the mayor.
I'd like to go through that funding and dance.
On the fundraising, do they have those donations committed?
Uh, I'm, I did have a question about fundraising, you have to be a five oh one C three, or can you?
Yes, I, I've already, I've already, I already have a tax ID number and I'm in the process of applying to become a nonprofit organization.
That takes quite a while to do.
Yeah, well, I hope, hopefully by May it'll be done.
Dan?
A little longer than that.
Anything?
Um, always after a good tune, absolutely.
And Tony, so we'd like to make, I, I suppose we make a motion to sponsor this event, provided, and allow them, the umbrella of the town insurance, um, provided there's no alcohol or any other substance there that's inappropriate. And that MMA allows that, so we have to get back to you. And I need a second on that one.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
So we'll get, we'll get back to you.
And I'll be in touch with you about my nonprofit status.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, we have a letter here for Butler Salvation, Dear Gilbert, we'd like to thank the Butler Foundation for its generous donation of five thousand dollars for our safe harbor project, the two thousand, twenty twenty vision for the town of Lubeck, we have waited a long time for such an addition to the safety of our fishing fleet as well as the recreational boaters that enjoy the waters surrounding Lubeck. So I need a motion to sign that. Two moves, second, all in favor? All righty. Okay, do you have sewer abatement first? Just two of them? Oh, yeah, that's... So we have a sewer abatement for twenty-nine twenty, it was a billing error. And we have a sewer abatement for forty-one sixty-eight, which is also a billing error. Thank you. You might want to wait, if you want to send that out, if she can sign it, okay? So we need a motion to accept these sewer abatements. Second, all in favor? So, can I get? That's, you might, it's got to have been signed. Is this because we missed someone's bill? One bill. One bill.
You've got the street.
One, one, four sold. Now getting their bill, right? Okay, we need a motion to sign a go omission sewer commitment for fifty-six ten.
So moved.
All in favor?
When I say so moved, when they discuss sewers.
I'm coming. Now, in your package, you have this long, lengthy letter from the lawyer explaining different, uh, different procedures for, kind of, maybe, and please read and absorb this, because we need to know about it for the public hearing. What else? All right, let's see if we can get through this special town meeting this time. Not on what, we do not want any more snow. So we're not, well, hopefully not, not on January, uh, eighteen. We need a motion to sign the warrant, it's the same warrant that we had. Second? All in favor?
How'd you feel about sending it for that?
Oh, that's fine.
Oh, okay. No tears?
I just have my standards, hold on.
Okay, we have quite a few other business issues that seem to have cropped up in the last forty-eight hours that we weren't able to put in the, um, agenda. I guess we've had quite a big problem with the boiler and I can return the meeting over to our town administrator to go through some of this.
All right, for, um, Monday morning, we had reports of strong fuels smell in the basement. Um, also conveniently, the toilet broke. So while, um, Coastline Plumbing and Heating was addressing the toilet, we had him looking at the, uh, boiler in which he pointed out flame and smoke coming from the boiler. He put cement on it, put a Band-Aid on it for now, but I did contact three different local area, um, heating repair people to look into finally replacing the forty-year-old boiler. Um, so we have, they've all three been here, I'm just waiting their estimates and I think so go ahead with... And Bobby Hood, the fire chief and the overseer of this building, has also been involved in the whole process, so. Um, it's not a matter of just pulling out the boiler, as one of the companies pointed out, there are some things that can be removed to make it more efficient. So it's not just putting out, taking out the old, putting in the new, it's, they might be able to downgrade a little bit because of the pellet boiler, um, the different zones that have come in to play over the years here in the building. It's just a big issue. It may not be just the cheapest, you know, it may not be a matter of going with the cheapest, but the most thorough bang for your buck type of situation. So, we're gonna thoroughly look at all the estimates and, um, go from there.
So I suggest to Renee, when she gets all three estimates, we may have to hold a special select board meeting. Because I don't like the idea that there's points coming out.
And I'll remind this everybody that we did plan for this, or you people planned for this. We have money in a reserve for furniture, ten thousand dollars. Reserve just for furnace replacement. Hopefully I don't see much for it.
Yeah.
Hopefully none of it is a...
And we, we also got, um, on another note, we've got a fireworks contract for July fourth again this year. They sent it with my name, but now, yeah, I asked to have it replaced with Renee's. And so we just need to give her permission to sign the... And so we just need to give her permission to sign the fireworks contract for this year.
And that was the one for?
Fourth of July, yes, we got it, yeah. So we need make a motion to let Renee sign that, all in favor?
Yep.
Okay. Where are we up to? They asked us to send somebody to um a update down in Machias. The commissioners had a special meeting for the increased crime in Washington County. And we sent Renee the other day and she was gonna give us a brief summary.
This was Monday night. It was an all call, this was a meeting that got postponed from the Friday snow event. So I don't think as many people attended as they hoped. Even more the commissioners, it worked when he wasn't able to make his bill. But they just pointed out that there's a shortage in police in the county, countywide. And it's due to they their pay, uh the media, people not wanting to get into the police field anymore. People don't want to come to Washington County and get paid fifteen dollars an hour to be a policeman. They were citing a whole lot of reasons of of that. They pointed out that it's being noticed by New York and Massachusetts. And the drugs are landing here at as of here. They they noted that there have been two homicides in Washington County in the last eight months. There have been five armed robberies in the past three months. And they stated that they have not invested in the police force. Other people that are coming here with a crime have. So it's time to change, they they don't know how to change, they're looking for answers from town official, the county commissioners. They um they pointed out that the sheriff wanted to add three additional deputies during the budget season process. The budget committee turned it down, but did um hire one additional, so.
Well, do I I'm not sure I want to put this. Is there answer so far just to increase the police force?
There's three levels, there's prevention, there's enforcement and treatment. So that's one level, that's one possibility. Right now, they're focusing on getting a group that can focus on a solution. Whether that's all the police force coming together with town officials. There will be more meetings in the future. I believe the budget is done for this year, I don't know what they can do going forward.
They did add one.
They did add one.
And that would and Renee, Renee and one other person.
Joyce Maker.
Joyce Maker were the only two that voted for increased police force.
A lot of the other committee members are from towns that have local police departments. Jonesport, Calis. They have their own, Machias, they have their own. For us, the sheriff's department is our local police department, so it was a really tough decision.
Well, thank you for going, I know that wasn't easy. Barbara?
May I ask a question? I'm going to direct it to Renee if it hurts, she's up there. Renee, I I was here the day that you were going down to that meeting and I said maybe it might be canceled. I don't recall seeing it anywhere that it was publicized, that that was a public meeting open for people to come to. So the county commissioners need to get on the stick of advertising if they want people to come down and give their opinion. The second question if I could ask you. I was inquiring regarding the eight percent increase we got from the county commissioners. And I was told by someone in this office that it was because we were gonna hire three police officers. So what did they raise this eight percent for if they only hired one?
Most of it went to the the buildings over there, all historic.
What buildings where?
The courthouse, the all those county buildings, they're really old. One of them or where it has a slate roof. And they all those come with high price tags of maintenance.
I think some might be able to give them a tip because it's a historic building, they need a preservation money to restore it.
Most of it is for the rehabilitation and the and the repairs on those buildings, a lot of it.
And I know, Rachel, Renee, that I mentioned to you, the other issue is what good is hiring all the police we can if it gets down to a judge and a judge, and I said this to you the other day. If a judge gives somebody who's a three-time offender a twelve-month sentence in jail and they're out in less than six months. The judges have to give them stiffer penalties. We're not doing anything, it's getting a slap in the hand and they're back in jail for a couple of months and back out the door.
But.
Do you know when the next meeting is gonna be done?
They have not announced it, but.
Well, I'd like to hopefully announce it in the papers.
I can put it on on the on our website and.
That would be appreciated.
Any other avenue that we use, Facebook.
Thank you very much.
Matt Foster was there, the DA, he he had some to say, but not a whole lot. One other um something else that I will mention, one of the selectmen from Jonesport stood up, Billy Milliken. And he stated at their annual town meeting, there were two articles that were going to be addressing the drug problem. Jonesport's similar guys, they don't have a town police force either. One of the articles was denied, I can't remember what it was. But the other one that was approved was they took a hundred thousand dollars from undesignedated and dedicated that to all drug enforcement. Ninety percent of it is to be used for enforcement and ten percent of it to be used for prevention. I don't know how they're gonna use that enforcement when the Washington County Sheriff's Department is already shorthanded. They can't do any more than they're already doing regardless of the money unless they hire somebody specifically for that town. I I haven't figured out how they work out.
Yeah, there's also an imbalance if they're only doing ten percent for prevention.
Mr. Dylan Moore was there.
Yes.
And I was so proud of him.
Yes.
He was there for Lubac and he stated the same thing. He said he would like to see this reversed.
Yes. It's kind of like putting a lot of money into prisons and no money into schools.
He got an applause.
Yes.
It was very well.
He's absolutely right, yes. You've got to do the promotion.
But I'm gonna call Jonesport and find out a little bit more of what they're doing. We you just pointed out the selective service that we pay for um at the at the budget committees. I mentioned that as well in that time, um that we we pay a little extra for so. But they they say if they don't have enough sheriffs or deputies to do the work that they need the county to do, they're not gonna have enough to come over to do the extra that we want. It's only extra, they don't have the manpower.
Renee, just so you're aware, cause you were not our our county manager at the time, I think as Michael just alluded to. We've had our own sheriff's department, we have had paid for a sheriff's team to be here. And people were questioning, well, what are we getting for it? And he said, well, if we get a call and it's in Whiting or Edmonds, even though he's on Lubac's dollar, he's gotta leave here and go out there. And we were paying for it, but not getting the services. So that doesn't seem to to jive with people either.
We are, I can help clarify that, we still do that, we still do the.
No, no, this was a man designated specifically for Lubac for so many hours a day.
We do selective service and they turn in time, it's not a it's not like a a stipend.
Right, no, this is one.
They turn in timesheets and we pay them for the time.
Part of the reality of the problem of this is mileage has to be covered, so always involves numerous vehicles.
There's three slots in Washington County, it's divided into three slots. And the slots are eight hundred to a thousand square miles each. There's forty-six towns and thirty-six pound ships.
Each of a car.
Those entities come.
So what about the uh the sewer sewer recycling plow?
Oh, yeah. I was approached by Bruce Green, who's the wastewater treatment plant operator, to finally purchase a plow for their truck. Plow recycling or to plow out their pump stations and to plow our wastewater treatment plant. He does have it in his budget under the equipment reserve. And he went to three, I asked him to get three estimates of local dealers. One was, the highest was by us in Jonespro, it was five thousand two hundred fifty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. Johnson's, four thousand five hundred fifty. And finally Pratt's in Calis was four thousand one hundred fifty dollars. This was a seven and a half foot Fisher H T plow, brand new, and that's installed. They gave us a a municipal discount, so.
Which truck in the film?
It's the sewer truck.
Is that four-wheel drive with that too?
Yeah, yeah.
It's special can handle?
Yep. So.
So that'll free up the public works to do the work on other needed areas.
And they'll give us another plow in our.
Barbara?
Can they look at purchasing perhaps a used plow? Cause you see them sometimes on face, I'm sorry to use that word, Facebook. But you see people that are getting rid of their plows for whatever the reason, I don't know, for a lot less money.
They considered that. And they they talked about that with um our public works director. And he counseled you buying other people's problems, so it was better off, it will come with a warranty. So I think I I agree.
And and they did agree to do backup, backup buddies.
So you have to put them out on it.
They did, didn't they?
Is this the cheapest time of year to be buying a snow plow?
That I don't know.
The sewer department is is I'd say ninety-eight percent self-contained. It's not taxed, it it runs, it's way bringing the revenue coming in is what's going out. It doesn't mean that we're not gonna have to replace the whole plant at some point. But um right now, as it it does cover, I'd say about ninety-eight percent of its costs. So they did have that money aside for equipment reserve, so.
Caroline just said that they're they'll be used as a backup, backup for who?
Just saying, it well, let's just say uh one of our trucks goes, well, we already have one that went. And Water Street needs to be plowed and the two big trucks are somewhere else. I'm sure that Bruce and Kenny would agree to do a swipe through the.
For town road.
The town roads in case we get stuck. Cause of course when we're about ready to go into a special town meeting to get a a backup truck, which is only eighteen. We're hoping that that will be approved by the taxpayers. Um so any more questions on the plow to the sewer department? Speaking of plowing, Main Coast Conservancy called Renee today and asked.
Down east.
What was it, of coastal?
Down east coastal conservancy, sorry.
Called and they um what, Mallory?
This is the Mallory Beach down by the wastewater treatment plant, there's a little parking lot turnaround where you can walk to the beach. He's new, his name's Matt, he's wondering if the town ever plowed it. And he's wondering if they didn't, if we would consider it.
Well, I'm wondering if we get access to our, they're right down there. I'm gonna ask, why would you want access to the beach, Mike? What would be the reason for access to the beach?
Can I make a comment on this? I use Mallory Beach daily, almost.
Okay.
My wife and I use it daily, all year long. We go, we go, we go down there to walk the dog, we have to walk on the beach for exercise. And often there's a giant pile of snow right in front.
And you pick up after your dog there.
Oh, of course. That my wife is one of the people responsible for the doggy.
Oh, okay.
I do want to say that it is used and my wife and I are not the only people who use the park. And we like it and and often during the winter time, we can't access it.
Okay.
It's a it's a much used facet of our town. And I would ask if we're willing to plow, are they willing to maintain broken boards in the boardwalk? Which leads to the which that is parking lot work?
Take notes on that, good point.
Another another comment on Mike's on what Mike's saying, they advertise that as a handicap accessible park. Of course, it's not an all-season park, you can't walk on the boardwalk in the in the winter time, it's very dangerous. But in the summertime, the the if they're going to advertise it's handicap accessible, wheelchair accessible, the boards need to be constantly maintained.
And on that point, I will remind this board once again that if they are going to use deck plank to repair what they have, it will only go in short order. If they are going to consider a large-scale resurfacing of that boardwalk, please do it at an inch and a half. And then it won't be torn apart in five years. There's a lot of people that use it, I'm surprised no one's gotten hurt. I broke a board walking on it, realized, well, it's half rotten.
I'll give a Matt's number at the end of the meeting.
Perfect. Got it, very good. Okay, so maybe they can talk to Kenny and Bruce about plowing.
Are there pros and cons about things? And I'm wondering what other doors this is gonna open up for other people that or organizations that want us to plow?
I'm just really thrilled that Public Works is plowing the boat, the boat landing for the fishermen because that was a long struggle. And it's doing a really good job now.
Who owns that parking lot?
Down East Council, Down East Coastal Conservancy.
They charge them for plowing.
So where do you pick one of them up if they're not really paying taxes?
This is why it's here tonight.
That's it, maybe there needs to be a donational contribution.
Well, the taxpayers are paying the men who are plowing it for their time, we're paying for the equipment.
Yes, and that's what you get for your taxes.
That's what you get for taxes, this is conservatory, they asking for a favor, you need to pay for it.
That's, I agree.
They have what usual, everybody pays when they have to have their driveway or something plowed, it could be forty, fifty dollars a pop.
I'll say we make a motion if they contribute something for the.
Well, they certainly should be asked, they might be able to do more than that, no.
Yeah, we can give them a dollar.
We should approach them.
So if somebody uses a plowed driveway.
Reasonable.
I think it's different, this is public access and that's private, I think a public access. Is not the same as my driveway, Rachel's driveway.
If you assess what dang, what would that cost would be. We just discussed one department that's right next to that parking lot that needs a plow. And it wouldn't go very far to plow just that parking lot.
Yes.
We just said.
So you can push out that agreement with something.
They have the sewer department with their their two percent.
It's at least a spot, it's a start to the dialogue.
Carol, the other aspect today is you turn around and you have you have organizations like the post office, they go out to date and they get, but they don't even know how much it's gonna snow. And they have to take that contract right up front. So if they get one flake or they get five million flakes, they're gonna pay the same amount. And that may be the same thing, but I like Michael's suggestion and Cecil's that, no, we need a plow, you pay for that and we'll plow it.
I I.
Six and one half, you can watch the rest and go wash the face.
Can we turn on the lights? I think that um volunteers. If it comes in as revenue under the sewer department, because they just bought the plow, it would help pay for the plow that they just bought. Maybe they'll have to work it out, Bruce can work it out, the X amount per times it snows.
Was that the seven thousand dollar plow?
I don't know, it was five bucks.
Okay, um right, we're gonna do a budget review, no, not yet. We do have, the town offices closed on for Martin Luther King's Day on Monday, the fifteenth. There's still gonna be a harbor board meeting at six o'clock, Tony?
Hope so.
There's plenty to talk about. Uh so, Emira, vote on a theme. No, I think the it should not, I think it should be up to the sewer department to see if they can get a fair plowing schedule with them to offset the price of their plow and I think maybe they.
So you're a plow?
Or or for plow, whatever. Or for plow, up to Bruce and Kenny, the ones that are plowing. You want a motion? Okay, we're gonna make a motion to turn over the amount to be charged to plow the Down East Conservancy parking lot there near the sewer department and have that worked out with Bruce and Kenny. Is that a good second, all in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. Will the town know how much was given for that plow?
Yes, it'll be in.
I'm sure he'll tell us.
It'll have to be an income.
You're gonna find out in the budget meetings.
Next year.
Okay, Emira, there was something from Emira.
This came in today. It's just a public announcement for those that live southerly of Maple Tree Road that there's gonna be some utility poles replaced there, so.
If you can make a math out, then you're doing better than I. And you know, we forgot, we skipped over Maze Bridge update at the DOT public hearing last night, Renee stayed and listened to that. And I think you were there as well, wasn't you?
Yes, yes, I was there.
I I had enough.
Oh, look, another place, look, there's another page to mess.
So maybe that's why we didn't.
Okay, Maze Bridge update, um this is the bridge out in West Lubac, just before you get the transit, there's a culvert type of situation there. They're estimating it to cost, this is federal and state funds upwards of eight hundred thousand dollars. They are going to be getting in construction, they said June twenty nineteen, but then they found out about the marathon and then they pushed, they're probably gonna push it up to July of twenty nineteen.
It's gonna be one-way advertising though, one-way traffic.
One-way traffic.
Yeah, and then it's gonna be finished in the. Yeah. And then it's gonna be finished in the fall of twenty nineteen. And they'll alternate the traffic, so there will never be a...
One of the suggestions that was made, and I think maybe I did, but that, that there are some alternate routes to avoid that. If the traffic is really heavy, you could go down Timber, Timber Cove Road and around. And not that you would stop that road, but that you would offer that alternative to traffic coming in so that might lessen the onslaught of people on that road.
And I'm sure it went on those roads.
Yeah, I know I'm gonna be fat for people.
And just keep in mind, this is the same sum of the sidewalk's gonna be repaired on Washington Street. So, we'll be just happy with traffic.
You mentioned poles being replaced. There is one extremely bad split pole for the power line that runs out to West Quoddy Head. It's right on that corner just before you get to the park. And it is split about twelve feet. It is split almost top to bottom. I don't know if it's holding it up. Do you know how that works? I just happened to drive out there, see the sea smoke and I came back. It's like, I saw the sunlight shining through.
It's been there for about, I'd say, four to six months.
Okay, you've seen it too.
It's on the Lea Road.
It's on the Lea Road.
Is that Bucow? No.
No.
South of that.
Well, it's called Quoddy Head, but yeah.
It's south of that.
All right, I gotta get a number. Okay.
Yeah, hold on a minute.
Budget meeting, budget meeting, uh, schedule. We're tentative with scheduling the budget meetings for every other Tuesday, four o'clock. Starting with, is it January thirtieth for the selectman and the department heads? And then every alternate Tuesday, not the select board meeting Tuesday, uh, sweeps. Starting with the thirteenth of February and then going every other week until... Public comment you missed? Anything you wanna say?
You guys are doing great.
Oh, same you. Cecil?
Yeah.
And Barbara, is that a good time for you?
I was just gonna ask, excuse me Cecil.
That's pretty good.
Every other Tuesday starting with January thirtieth, is that including the budget committee people?
Budget committee doesn't start till February thirteenth.
So, February thirteenth is when we have to be there.
Sorry Cecil.
No, sorry. Just a point of information about the new boiler. I realize that is an emergency.
You wanna look at it after?
Yeah, we would want to have your opinion.
Have you had it? Conversations with the contractors? Is it bidding? That they're gonna have to bring the boiler room itself up to code once they touch that boiler?
Not much.
It will be, if plumbing and we have a quarrel, plumbing inspector. And they haven't done that.
Yeah, that was part of the discussions.
I know that they realize it has to be done. Doesn't mean they're going to.
Ask them again.
Yes, yes.
If anything happens, they have to upgrade that boiler.
Which is something they need to know.
You know, that adds to the expense of the boiler bill. I know you're gonna have one yesterday. But it all has to be taken care of.
Very well, very good point well taken Cecil. Thank you. Because we would need to have that replaced so they find out we can upgrade.
But I'd rather give you that information than six months down the road wish that I had.
Thank you. I think it's something we may or may not have thought of. You know, there's a lot, lot going on right now.
That was, that was the reason why the pellet boiler appeared out there is because of all of the cost to properly, to code, bring all of that up down there.
The pellet boiler isn't, I don't believe, as helpful as...
Don't get rid of it yet.
I think actually Renee brought up something to me today, which was a great insight, that we're paying seven percent.
Seven point one.
Seven point one percent for what we're borrowing to pay that off, that there's, that should be easily paid off and with a very, very much lower interest rate of the balance.
The pellet will maybe do a better job if there was better heat exchange downstairs.
They pointed that out today.
But we have, what, five thousand we owe still on it?
On the pellet boiler, five thousand.
And, but we're paying it at a rate of seven percent, which is really...
Let me just make a...
So, I'm hoping to refinance that. Maybe we should just pay that off.
That's why I was investigating it, but we only owe five thousand dollars.
Or maybe seven point one percent. Basically, that's something maybe we can just get rid of with the next budget. Just not have any more payments. Cecil?
One other thing. Are you thinking about any other fuel besides oil in the fuel?
He mentioned gas, but he said due to the size of the building.
That may help with the cost of upgrading the boiler room.
They also, one of them mentioned about, we don't need such a big boiler that we have now.
I'm sure you don't.
That they can make it a little smaller and more...
Probably twenty-five cents a gallon. And bigger is better. Well, that's not necessarily the case.
And again, with gas, the more you use, the less you pay. Oil starts hearing goes up and prevents it gets older in your end unless you pre-buy or you get a contract with somebody.
Well, I think the town gets a contract.
From mid...
Fuel, no. Oh, fuel. We've, the fuel's bit out. So much over rack press.
If you were seeing like a burning on your boiler jacket or some smoke and fire, what Trent did with a patch will probably afford you enough time to really look at those bids and see what you'll buy.
I think she's doing estimates and...
I'm not gonna buy anything without calling you first.
I'm not looking for work, by the way, but...
I'm gonna look at it. The purchasing agent has the right to waive the normal bidding process on emergencies and Renee's purchasing agent.
Right.
So, I believe she's not going with a bid, um...
Formal bid.
Formal bid, just three estimates. So, I'm sure she'd appreciate any help from you.
Ensure that you have an up-to-code boiler room. There isn't even a ceiling in the one that you have now.
Okay, so you didn't know any of that.
Keeps getting better and better.
They really like Kingless Meat Cecil.
We don't really find him.
So, any committee?
Recycle tomorrow afternoon, four o'clock.
Four o'clock.
And we're welcoming a new student from the school.
We're on Friday.
I'm sorry, Friday, Friday. I've lost my date.
Friday at four o'clock.
We didn't have a weekend. That was what happened. No weekend. All right, so State Harbor is Thursday, January twenty-fifth at six o'clock. Everyone is welcome. Harbor Board of Courses next Monday at six.
Quoddy TV hiatus and I did not make it sure for yesterday.
Wasn't sure. Our last was today. That was yesterday. Was it yesterday?
Okay.
We're all cabin fever. Public comment? I know the pledge working hard on the economic development committee.
I'd say so.
So, next, next economic development is gonna be, did you guys set a date?
Uh, no, we didn't. Well, we didn't have a meeting tonight.
You didn't have an official meeting?
We'll do it.
What is you normally, what's, it's usually every other Wednesday before the...
We do it once a month, once a month.
The five o'clock before the...
So, we would do it February the seventh, I believe.
Cecil's here. We can announce planning board meetings.
Planning board meeting is next to which is the ninth.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, yep. Okay, what time?
Five o'clock.
We have cabin theater film tomorrow afternoon, just for something lighthearted at the library at three o'clock. We are showing Genius, the relationship between Max Perkins and some author. Free popcorn.
Motion to adjourn. If they have other comments?
To move.
Second?
Second.
All favorites. Thank you for coming.